We're ready whenever you.
All right. Coming to order in a city council special meeting of Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. It's 5:30 in the evening. Agenda item one, discussion regarding warming shelter options.
Mr. Anthony Pearant, in the city attorney's office will deliver the staff report.
Good evening. So this is RFP 2122-85. So this was the RFP where we solicited proposals from local nonprofits to operate a overnight shelter, if you guys remember that. I just kind of wanted to go a very brief history of the shelter situation here in Norman. And I think, you know, what we have kind of in our collective knowledge, since about 2008, we've known that there's been some inadequate inventory of low barrier emergency shelter space. Since about 2008 to 2015, the city addressed that a little bit with some sporadic funding from the Social and Voluntary Services Commission. So kind of drawing out a little bit of money here and there. So historically, there have been some local nonprofits that have offered overnight shelters with different level of barrier to that shelter stay. So Salvation Army, they are, they have about, I don't know, 20-person capacity and they have two family rooms. I wouldn't consider them, how they currently operate, as low barrier, but they are a great resource. Transition House, Women's Resource Center, they do offer housing. I don't know if I would categorize any current shelter operation in the city of Norman as a low barrier emergency shelter, as you guys are probably familiar with the city of Norman operations and how we run that. So in January 2015, we kind of shifted to provide more of that, identify, or fill that gap. In 2015, we provided a $20,000 grant to Food and Shelter, and that was to provide hotel room vouchers. And that was after a couple of exposure deaths in the community where people didn't have adequate shelter during the colder months. And then, I think, following that, in the 2015 contract year, we did explicitly provide funds to Food and Shelter specifically to operate a winter warming shelter in their dining room. And how we structured that is 2015 to 2018, we decreased the amount of funding per year, trying to get it to where it's, you know, not city-funded in total, I believe. But then in about 2019, Food and Shelter did stop providing that winter warming shelter, and the city took that initiative on. So, once the city took on operation of a winter warming shelter, that was about in December of 2019, we opened the first city-run overnight warming shelter in the old library here in City Hall campus. And that went through December 2019 to February of the next year. We then moved to the Comanche location for the 2021 winter season. And then at that next spring, we never ceased operations, but I think once the shelter, we were beginning to start thinking about closing down. But then there was an encampment dismantling over on Alameda, and we wanted to keep it open to provide some shelter for the people who were displaced. And then after that, we kept it running again for that winter season without stopping services until ultimately the shelter closed in June of 2022. And then, just to give you an idea, that 18-month operation about, with on and off operation, considering the first two were only the winter months, the total cost of that operation was about just shy of $600,000. So, and that was from different sources. There was an ESG grant, there were two rounds of that, and then we had general fund allocations of $80,000 to supplement those funds. The Comanche closure, so you guys are probably familiar with this, but in May of this year, we were informed by the property owner that their insurance was, they were on notice that their insurance would be canceled, so we had until June 30th to vacate the property. So, in response to that, we began working on this request for proposals, wanting to see nonprofit in the community who'd be willing to operate a low barrier emergency shelter similar to what we had been operating at the city. So, a summary for this RFP, what we were requesting, we wanted to, you know, fund some sort of construction of a new congregate shelter, or add new shelters to an existing facility that already operates here in Norman. We did not want to supplant existing programs or services. We wanted, if we were going to provide this funding, we wanted increased service, expanded service, in the manner that we put forth in the RFP. We sought, you know, proposals for essentially low barrier overnight shelters with a specific focus on assisting those persons who stay there with finding permanent housing as a part of their stay. So, some of the specifics we requested, we did specify it had to be an overnight emergency shelter, but we would give preference to any proposal that provided for 24/7 support to the clients. We wanted to target bed space based on our numbers at our shelter, 20 to 30 men and 15 to 20 women a night. Because of this is a low barrier model, we recognized that this would, you know, need some robust staffing for, you know, any of the nonprofit that's going to take this on. And so we wanted to make sure that that was something that was expected, but also that we understood on our end that it was going to require that in the funding proposal. We also wanted to include some type of 24/7 site supervision, just to keep the loitering down at the location when it's closed. And that way, they can keep the site when it's not being used as a winter warming shelter free from people who are staying outside. And then we also wanted the proposer to find the appropriate location. So, and then, I also put, you know, with city assistance if necessary. So if they, for example, found a parcel and, you know, they wanted to work with the city and maybe we could put up a building or, you know, kind of facilitate the, I think, the initial capital expenses, that would be something that we would be willing to look into. And then they were also allowed to partner with other agencies to provide these services kind of on a, I guess, shared basis, like if one entity wanted to do men and one entity wanted to do women at two separate locations, and they wanted to submit a proposal together, that was something that we wanted to facilitate and allow. So, we got two proposals total, one from Salvation Army and one from Food and Shelter. And that's kind of what we're here to talk about today. The first proposal from Salvation Army was for about $440,000 plus an additional commitment for four years. So that is not something that we're, I'll talk about that later, we would not be able to do. The RFP was specifically for one-year term, and we'd be restricted on being able to contract out for more than that one-year period. They wanted $440,000. It'd be a year-round operation, 4:30 to 8:00 a.m., and then it would be women and children only. So the interesting part about this is, the first proposal was for women only, the second proposal was for men only. So they did kind of take that splitting of services option that we provided. They would have a 20-person capacity, and I think that would also include use of the two family rooms that they currently have in their facilities. The interesting part about this, they are not expanding total bed space. So they were currently, or they are currently, I think, operating at that same maximum bed capacity for both men, women, and families. They would be shifting from that, keeping the total number of beds, moving to a low-barrier women-only shelter.
So for, what do they need the $440,000 for then if they're not going to expand any beds?
That was our question as well. So what, you know, we are, so I think what their thought was, is they were going to partner with Food and Shelter, they did this in conjunction with the other proposal, and they thought that there was some value in having a separate women's and men's shelter. And they thought that in order to increase the total capacity citywide, they could help with that by going from their current model to a low-barrier model, which does require increased security, which is an expense, increased foundational or infrastructure, like security cameras and stuff like that. And since it's a low-barrier model with case management, they would have more staffing needs. That being said, when you look at the proposals as a whole, if we go with this proposal, we would not be increasing shelter capacity in the city of Norman. We could still, you know, we would not have to accept this proposal in order to get to the same total number of beds.
But you said that they partnered with Food and Shelter, right?
Yes, and I'll get to that in a second.
Okay, okay. So just this by itself is not increasing the number, but with their partnership in conjunction with Food and Shelter, it will?
Sort of.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure how to explain it, how it was explained to me, because I don't know if I quite understood it. But basically, that was assuming that Food and Shelter would only be men only. Food and Shelter did say that they would be willing to do a co-ed facility. So in that case, we could still operate, you know, a low-barrier model with men and women at one location without having to do both proposals. And I think that is also something too, is I don't think, I think they thought that we were really wanting to increase the maybe total number of low-barrier shelters in the city. And I don't, I mean, while that's something to achieve, I think that, you know, keep in mind, I think the Salvation Army is a wonderful, wonderful program, and they have a model that is extremely, like it's a well-oiled machine over there.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, like why break something that's not fixed?
Exactly.
Or why fix something that's not broken?
And that was kind of our thoughts. And I don't, you know, I think that having a variety of different housing options and shelter options in the city of Norman isn't necessarily a bad thing. I don't think you need to have all, you know, I don't know if there's a value to having all low barrier, or having a mix of low barrier and maybe higher barrier as well. So, that to be said, we wouldn't lose any shelter capacity if we didn't go with this proposal.
You keep saying low barrier, can you just clarify for fun, does that mean sex offenders or not?
I think we, so low barrier is not no barrier. And I think, I don't know if we put in the RFP that you can't do that. I think, I mean, if you're going to, I mean, we have to put it in perspective, right? If you have a location that would be able to, you know, be a shelter for those particular individuals, that means it would have to meet all the requirements. I don't know where you could.
There's no place in Norman city limits that has.
I don't, I don't know where you could put that. So, I think that just locationally, that would be prohibitive anywhere you go.
Okay, thank you.
Could you tell me about the expansion of current case management services? Like what do they have in mind for that?
Yes.
Especially with this population of women and children?
I think that, you know, they would have two part-time case managers as a part of this proposal, which, you know, I asked her, you know, is that something that you would still consider moving forward with even if it isn't something that we would move forward with, you know, the full proposal? Because case managers, I think, are needed. So they were suggesting two part-time case manager, new positions be added to their current employee pool. So, right now, I think they only have a very, very skeleton staff, and they've been able to do that pretty effectively. So, but with that low barrier model, they expect a higher staffing requirement, so. And they all, this one, they did actually say that meals would be provided at the specific location too. Now, at Food and Shelter, they did submit a proposal for $650,000, so it was a little bit more expensive. But, keep in mind, they factored in the cost of insurance and rent, because they would be leasing a property, it would not be on Food and Shelter campus. That is something that they said, I believe, they were pretty consistent, they did not want to put it on Food and Shelter campus. So I think they wanted to keep those facilities separate. They had initially identified the old CBS on Main Street for a potential location. I don't think that is currently an option at this point. So I think they're still working on other locations, I don't think that will be something going forward.
Did they give reasons why they would not want to put it on Food and Shelter campus?
I don't remember any specific reason.
They don't have the land.
Oh, they don't have the land?
They have the land.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, they don't have the land for it, they're already developing that. But she, we did see April on Thursday at an event with some COC partners, and she did mention that the COC property did fall through, but they have other property owners with agreeable property, but they're not willing to sign any lease yet until, yeah.
And so right now, and, you know, that will be, you know, that's kind of hard, you, you know, you can't necessarily get a property and sign a lease before you have funding, and but you can't get funding. So that's something I'll talk about later on in the presentation. So, the rest of their proposal, kind of rounded out, it would be year-round, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., men only, but willing to do a co-ed facility. They would have a 50% capacity, but that was based on the CVS footprint. So that is going to obviously have to change based on location, more, maybe less, depending on that. But the more capacity you have, you might have increased security requirements as well. So that's something to consider. So that's also an issue too, is how do you come up with a dollar amount prior to having a footprint and knowing your security needs.
Do they say why men only?
I think that was just kind of how they originally approached the proposal, and that's just kind of how things worked out, since they kind of decided to work on the project in tandem. So I think that was, I think maybe one of them was approached by the other with the suggestion, and they both went with it, so. But I think Food and Shelter said they would be fine if it was both men and women, and I think that their previous shelter at, in the dining room, was something that was both men and women. And I will say that she did mention why they didn't want to do it in the dining room again, because it was very disruptive. And it's hard to, you know, have that for a, you know, a dining room, and then also convert it in the same day to a winter warming shelter, because you're not really using that room as it was intended, and it can be put some pretty strenuous. It's just, it didn't work out, I think, and so that makes sense, that made sense to me. They also said there would be two full-time case managers, they would be on site 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., but I think they would also be available during the day. I don't know if that means they would be available on that particular site for like walk-ins or anything like that, or if they would be located on the Food and Shelter campus, I'm not sure about that. The transportation piece, they are going to provide transportation at 7:00 a.m. when the shelter closes to Food and Shelter location on Reed for breakfast. And so they were able to be, provide location. I don't know if that would be something mandatory, if you stay in the shelter, you have to take that transportation to Food and Shelter, or if that would be optional. All right, so considerations, now that you kind of have a rundown of both proposals. As we've talked about, one proposal does not expand the total bed capacity. You can still get the same amount of beds out of Salvation Army and still get the 50 new beds from Food and Shelter. You would just not have 70 beds of low barrier shelter, you'd have 20 higher barrier and then 50 lower barrier.
Just as a, and I don't know if this is a city manager question or who, but just reading this screen right here, saying that this is coming out of general fund, if this is something that we set up and we do end up creating a homeless shelter, is this something that can have like its own line items, so we're not having to approve it every year? Or is it like?
Depending on how we go about setting up the operator's agreement, and I'll ask Catherine and Mr. Francisco to help chime in, just to make sure, it would be set in a way that would be visible, transparent for everybody to see, but not too big an exercise going forward? And also, if there are other grant opportunities that Lisa threw the Community Development Block grant could potentially access to help us operate like we did last.
Previous.
Warming center. So that's, those are things we would want to take into consideration.
Fair enough.
But doable.
Because I believe like it showed, we only used $80,000 of the general fund last year, so that makes sense if most of it's paid for with grants. All right, sorry.
And so it would, yeah, so based on that, we would be fully funding this at least for the next year, I believe, with general fund balance. So, I don't know how that would look going forward, but I think that's one of the reasons why we can't do the five-year term that they were both wanting in the proposals, because that's coming from general fund, subject to appropriation every year. And then, we also noted splitting the location for men and women, that wasn't the best option, obviously, because it doubles the cost of overhead, which is significant. I mean, considering security is your, is your huge expense. $220,000 per year for Food and Shelter, $130,000 for Salvation Army, that was their security costs. And that was something that was consistent when the city operated their, the warming shelter as well. Again, you can't have that multi-year contract, and the location that was identified by Food and Shelter could have drawn some pretty significant objections, I think. And that's going to be probably the case with any location that the provider finds, and that's going to be something as well. They are likely going to, I mean, they will have to probably do a spud for any location, and they're going to be, have to be the ones to provide that zoning change, or provide that zoning application to change that zoning. And finding a, you know, property owner, if it's a lease situation, who's willing to do that could be difficult. And we can't contract away the requirement for that zoning. So if they, you know, they have to apply for zoning and it has to be passed by council, we can't contract that away on the front end, that is going to be, have to be something, they have to go through that process. So, next steps, this is, you know, putting it into your hands, we can, you know, right now, we have two proposals, we can accept both, we can accept one, not the other, or we can accept neither. We can narrow the scope of the RFP and either send back another RFP that, you know, is something that you think, based on these proposals, we want to shift the way we're tackling this, or we can attempt to address those concerns in contract negotiations. And we have some potential cost reduction strategies, now that you guys have, you know, the cost associated with what we're asking, based on what they're willing to provide, is this something that, you know, we need to do some cost reduction, maybe year-round, maybe we'll look at seasonal operation, go back to just winter only? I would, you know, say that both men and women at one facility is going to be a huge cost saver. And then, lastly, I just suggest making the contract award, if any, we need to make that conditioned on them finding the property and them obtaining the appropriate zoning.
Mr. Pearant?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes, so, sounds like, you know, legally, as both of these proposals are set up now, we can't accept either of them because they encumber a future council, correct? The multi-year agreement portion of them?
Yes, but I think that could be something that we address in the contract negotiations.
Okay.
What we usually do, because there's a constitutional provision that says we can't enter into debt beyond current fiscal year, is that, it's the language in the contract that says future years are contingent on appropriation.
Okay.
And then you guys handle that at the budgeting stage, and if it's in the approved budget, then we continue on.
Okay, so these proposals are up for, they are up for negotiation slightly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They would have to be up for negotiation, yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
What was our average nightly stay in our previous facility?
Do you know that, Lisa?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Average nightly head count?
The, the point-in-time head count was 200.
At the shelter.
At the shelter.
Overnight stays on average, 30.
We had a capacity of 35, and I think through December, when we opened through the end, we averaged 25 a night. There were several nights we were at capacity, obviously several nights. But the whole average for the 18 months or so was 25.
Councilmember?
So I, just looking at that, I guess I'm not really sure why Salvation Army is involved then, if Food and Shelter is willing to do both men and women. I, I'm like you, like I feel like what, although I don't like some of the barriers that Salvation Army has, I think that their program works really well. I don't recall the gentleman at Salvation Army saying anything to us about this on Thursday. So I don't know that this is really, I guess I'm just unclear of where this is coming from, from them, because their model does work well. They have, they allow people to stay there two weeks if they're in job placement or in the process of getting a house, and they can stay there longer. And I like the ability that, because we have to understand that these are also families, not everyone is a single mom with kids, or a single guy, or a single woman. Some people are truly family, so it would be nice to have a place where a family could go. So I like the idea that, like you said, it's not all low barrier, because Salvation Army does have some stipulations, and to have those different types of shelters that we could operate here in the city makes more sense to me. But I do like the idea of year-round, because as we know, Oklahoma has really, really cold winters and really, really hot, hot, hot summers. And so, we have seen people die out on the streets in both cold and hot elements, just as recently as the gentleman off of Flood and Gray here at the Valero. So, I think that it's important that this be a year-round operation, and I'm definitely for providing the funds, or at least letting them know for Food and Shelter's aspect, that the funds are available, so that way they can try to move forward with anything that they have, because like you said, this is going to take a process, they have to come back to us with a spud, present that to us. So I think that, just kind of like with the low-income housing the other night, this is kind of the same thing, we're at the first part of this, we have to start somewhere so we can at least get the funding into the hands of operators that have really well-established track records in our community with this. And so I would, I'd like to see this move forward.
Councilmember?
Mr. City Manager, what is the timeline for this? If we decide to award to either or both tonight, or in the future?
Because winter's coming.
What, is this in the current fiscal year, or is this something we appropriate for the next year? What's the timeline?
Our goal would be to make preparation for the current fiscal year, and depending on the location, you know, historically, the warming shelter function started towards the end of October, and depending on the location, they identify, I mean, we would work towards that goal.
How long does it take to get a spud?
Nine days.
Nine days?
Ninety. Ninety, I was like, oh, that's great!
Please don't say nine anywhere.
Can it, can we?
That'd be a tough bill.
Where, are we still on a more?
Center City.
No, that's right, Center City. Is there any way to kind of expedite the process, or is that a no?
We can cut it down by two weeks probably, but the state requirements for notification and stuff like that, we have to end publication in favor, it's, it's all ninety days.
Okay.
Councilmember Lee?
So previously, what was the timeline from when we started and the almost $600,000 that we spent? Is that from December of 2019 or so?
Yeah, to June 2022.
So over that whole time, not quite three years, but two and a half years.
Eighteen.
It might have been more.
Two and a half years. We're about to spend more for one year than we did on warming shelter with average nightly stay of 25. We're about to spend more than that over what we did in two and a half years for just one year. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It doesn't, I don't know if that's the, you want to do this, why don't we overlook getting the most bang for our buck for what they're, what they're doing? They're 50, we never even came close to filling that, 50. We're going to have those 50 spots, and we're just saying, hey, we have room for more, come on. I don't get it, it's just too much money. I get your point of what you want to do and why you're wanting to do it, and I have no problem with that, but you're using taxpayer money. Do it, there's got to be a more reasonable way to do it.
That's my big.
City Manager Paul, you alluded to that there's some grant opportunities, do we, how confident are we that we're going to secure some of the EGR grants that paid for them? Because I think, yeah, $80,000 is what the city's portion was of the $600,000. So, do we feel confident we could get a similar amount in grant funding?
This will be a, kind of a, what does your gut tell us, Lisa, who lives in that environment as regularly as anybody, probably zero guarantee?
Sure.
Yeah. It was funded with the Emergency Solutions Grants. There were two rounds that came out of the Department of Commerce, and it was CARES Act money.
Okay.
The Cleveland County Continuum of Care does receive an annual appropriation of Emergency Solutions Grants, and it's about $175,000. And it's about one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that is split between Salvation Army, Food and Shelter, and Thunderbird Clubhouse. So it would be taking those funds from those agencies that use for prevention and rapid rehousing activities, that they would no longer be eligible for those if the continuum decided this was more appropriate funding.
Sure.
That's outside the purview of the city. That goes to the continuum of care for that decision.
Okay.
I don't see any other funding on the horizon, opportunities, that we had a fortunate timeline with CARES Act funds to access.
Well, I mean, I'll go ahead, go on record and say, I think having even one exposure-related death is definitely one too many. And that's, it's pretty unacceptable for a city of our size. But I think Councilman Berlin here does have some legitimate concerns. The price tag is large. So if there was some grant funding to go along with, I'd have a lot higher comfort level approving something like this. So I'd really love to see what we could explore, maybe shake out of the trees before we committed to spending this amount of money.
And also on the path that, you know, depending on council's consensus, to begin negotiations to bear that cost down as much as possible would be part of our chart.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler.
So I'm trying to kind of, I guess, wrap my head around the larger discussion that we've been having around homelessness in our community. And, you know, we originally, as Mr. Carrington so kindly put together, kind of the timeline of us funding, providing funding for food and shelter back in two thousand and fifteen to start utilizing their dining space for a warming shelter. And then slowly that funding went away, and then they were unable to continue operating that service. And then, you know, we took it over as a city. And what we've been hearing is that we are not good operators as the city. And so we've been utilizing, you know, and then had the amount of funding that it has cost us from, you know, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two. And so a lot of the conversation has been around, well, why don't we allow our nonprofits to fill this gap? Why are they not doing it? Why are, you know, people not stepping up? Why does the city have to provide this service? And I think it shows a little bit how our nonprofits also do not have the funding to be able to provide this level of service to our community, because we were helping to fund that. When that funding went away, they were unable to continue the service. So we took it on. We understand that maybe the city is not great service providers for the capacity that we, you know, can go out and maybe get grants. We have a funding mechanism for this. And now we put out an RFP to kind of try to figure out what is, what is another option and a solution to, to fund this needed service that, need I remind everyone, that is an identified need and a gap within our home-based study, our GATS analysis. And so trying to plug all of these pieces together, this isn't something that is going to be, I guess, easy to figure out. But I think we've all along been trying to fill, find a way to have our public-private partnership. And what our nonprofits, from what I'm hearing from doing this RFP, is saying, this is how much it costs. It is expensive. There's a lot of money that goes into providing the security, the case management, like, it's the people, right, that are doing the work to help support the service. That's where a lot of this money is coming from. And so, you know, while I do understand the high price tag, I think this is also what our community has been asking from us, is how do we support nonprofits that are good at the service, that are good at providing the work that they do? And so I think that, you know, that's a long way to say, that I think that going this route of the city finding money for a known need in our community and partnering, like Councilmember Studley said, with nonprofits that have proven track records, that know what they're doing, they're already serving the community in different capacities, and filling these other gaps, I think, is the way that we want to thoughtfully approach this solution. So I would like to see us, you know, continue to negotiate the contract in the way that's going to be most beneficial for the city and the nonprofit. And that is all obviously going to be within the legal, you know, realm of possibility for us. So, and I agree, I think, thinking about this in a way that cuts down the overhead with, you know, doing a co-ed shelter, and thinking about those strategically are really important. So I would like to see, in some capacity, this move forward. And if it takes ninety days, we know that there's going to be a zoning that comes forward. Ninety days, I mean, at this point, that puts us into November. And so we already know that we're going to have cold weather. So like, the time is of the essence. We don't have a ton of time to be kind of sitting on our hands, wondering what the next option might be. We really need to think fast and make some decisive decisions about what this is to save members of our community that may be exposed to the elements, so.
Councilmember Grant.
I have a question about that CARES Act funding. We still have four-hundred-and-fifty thousand of it.
Mr. Francisco?
It's not that much. We still have some, it's more like a hundred.
Can some of it be used to help fill the funding for this? And then my other question is, it's Cleveland County Continuum of Care. What can the county help offer in this partnership?
That is an excellent question, has not been posed yet, but happy to carry that question.
Are they interested?
We're going to find out.
Why hasn't that been posed? Because I know we've asked that previously.
So the COC carries that ball, and I don't know, county health, who is the conduit to the COC from Cleveland County?
We have had an open invitation from anybody from the county's office to join in that could ever express a request.
Yeah, but I think, I think we need to take it beyond just an open invitation. I feel like at a city level, if you, as a city manager, could reach out to somebody at the county and see what it would take to bring them to the table here, I think that that would be extremely important. But I also, because time is of the essence, we just, we need to move this forward. I do understand what you're saying, Councilmember Lynn, about the cost. That's why I feel like a happy medium would be like, let's kind of hold off on the Salvation Army standpoint of it. That's just my opinion. And try to push forward the food and shelter. So then we're looking at what, it was around six-hundred thousand is what food and shelter needed. And that was if they were doing the CVS, which, it's my understanding that the new location, which I'm not exactly sure where, but is going to be smaller than the CVS, so probably more like thirty to thirty-five capacity. So I'm assuming it's going to be around, you know, five hundred, or where we were at the operating cost previously. So just my personal opinion to kind of alleviate some of that heartburn with the cost, is if we could at least push forward the food and shelter piece of this, maybe possibly still stay in negotiations with Salvation Army and see if there's some other piece or something else that they can contribute to add capacity. Because in my mind, it doesn't make sense to give somebody 4K that's not their four-hundred thousand. That's not going to add any capacity to our, our need. But just my, my thoughts.
Anthony, you had said that food and shelter, they will transport them from the warming shelter to the facility. If they're there all day, will they transport them back to the overnight shelter?
I'm not sure.
I don't know if they said that, because I didn't see that.
I think they also partner with a local nonprofit, Norman Caravan.
Right. So they would have transportation. So pretty much, this would be sort of keeping these people sheltered and somewhere twenty-four seven. So between when the food and shelter closes, they could get transportation to the overnight shelter, and then they're being taken back. So that keeps people off the street, right? Essentially, it would sort of operate.
Yeah, pretty robust transportation options.
Like that? Okay. And then Kristi, April's not here, I don't know if you can answer this, but is this something that food and shelter can apply a grant for? Is this something that you would have the capability?
I was not involved in our proposal, so I don't think I should speak to that.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I'm going to Google it. We can trust Google.
Councilmember Holman.
I agree with a lot of what's been said. I definitely think it's, it's not acceptable to allow anybody to die of exposure on the streets of Norman. So whether it's thirty, or forty, or fifty people that are out there, I think it's worth finding a way to provide some sort of shelter when the elements are the way they are here in Oklahoma. I would like to know kind of a better, have a better idea of the cost breakdown of what that six-hundred-and-fifty K is specifically. But I do agree, I think, going with the food and shelter route seems to be the more, the one that makes the most sense to me. And pending location, is it for sure that whatever location it is, is going to require a zoning change?
Not necessarily.
I mean, a spud could be a long-term thing, but if it's, we need to get this up by the time it gets cold.
I think they'll have to probably do a zoning change. Our zoning ordinance doesn't really contemplate the shelter use with the services combined with it. And a spud is a good way to protect whatever neighborhood it's in. So that's probably something that the city and food and shelter would benefit from.
Okay, so. And to Councilmember Holman's point, just to keep in the back of our minds, we did submit a five-million-dollar state ARPA grant application for permanent shelter development. And perhaps in that ninety-day process, such a site could be identified where if funding presents itself from the state, we might be in a position to move and make what is temporary permanent, so that effort on the SPUD, you know, may not be a wasted effort. It could be the permanent solution. I am in regular contact with the process at the state, and as soon as they know something, we will know something. So I'll keep you posted when we get word one way or the other on our applications.
And are they, would food and shelter, if we went this route, would they be buying this building, or they'd be renting this building?
Had not heard. What was in their proposal?
Okay. So would they be buying the building potentially before we've even allocated any funding to them? And buying a building takes at least thirty days, right?
I would think.
And then you'd have to start the zoning process after that. So that's four months, really. That's if that's, if we started today.
In an ownership scenario, it would be possible to have a contingent offer pending full entitlements. And if entitlements are granted, close escrow almost simultaneously. So you might be able to run those two processes concurrently and still get it done in ninety days. That is a possibility.
So would we know how much the space is costing before we allocate money for it?
We have no information, none whatsoever.
They estimated seven-thousand dollars a month in grants, in their proposal.
Okay, good, good. So yeah, that would be helpful information, I think. But I think that moving that direction with the food and shelter proposal makes the most sense out of these two. And pending some of those answers to those questions, I think we might have a more clear picture. But I agree, it's, it is time-sensitive. It will be getting cold soon, as hard as it is to believe. And, yeah, we just can't have people stuck out on the street, exposed to it in this town, in my opinion. It's just not acceptable.
Councilmember Turcher.
You know what, everyone said, what's, what I would say and ask, like your, look, I'm on record saying that the city should not be doing this, but I do advocate that nonprofits should take up this space because they're more, they're qualified to do this. They do this every day. So I'm for this proposal. My issue is with the money issue. We've been discussing the money issue and getting the most we can for what we're spending. So if this CVS pharmacy can only hold, how many, what's the max this place can actually hold?
It won't actually hold. It, it's going to be a different place than the CVS, but another facility.
So, so if we're going to do this and spend as much money, I want to house as many people as we can.
You bet.
I want the families housed. And, you know, we don't like people dining on the streets in extreme weather. That's not what we're here to discuss. But the cost issue is a factor in my decision. And Councilman Holman asked that question I would have asked, too, the breakdown of what's going to be spent and how it's going to be spent. And I think it's an important issue that, you know, will this be property we purchase or they purchase? And that does add time to our timeline. And so I'd like to have these answers. And, you know, if we can house both men and women, then this is what that bang for our buck is all about. My question is, how long is this contract going to be for? So what's, is it, is it one year? So six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for one year, and they provide all the services, the security. Is that, what I'm understanding with this contract, is that they will have onsite counselors to, to address issues like drug abuse, substance abuse, veteran-related issues? Is that, I'm understanding that's, that's part of the process, is to identify what services they need. So we're going to have space in this location, office space for these agencies to sit in during the day and night?
I think the space is more for case management. Those are the services provided there. So we're focused on housing. But other facilities provide the counseling and things like that, so certainly there will be opportunities. But yes, it'll have to be a yearly contract. It could have auto-renewal provisions, but they would have to be contingent on budget appropriation every year by council.
And typically, the biggest value in the shelter process happens at the intake, when we are able to identify who you are and what services have you been offered? What services are you in process receiving? You know, and how we can help you from all the resources available in the continuum of care?
Because the sellers or constituents, they need to know that, that this process and this proposal, for lack of a better word, addresses all the issues that we're supposed to be looking at and doesn't create any new ones. So the fear, and in the conversations today, just emails and phone calls, is that, will this bring in new issues or bigger issues? I don't know. Because we don't have that, we don't have that information right now. But, you know, we'd like to, I'd like to keep an eye on these issues, because we don't want this spriling out, out of, and then have these people show up and loiter during the day and so forth here, and drug issues. You know, with the homeless population, there's a big substance abuse issue. And so do we, do we have people on-site to make sure no one's selling drugs and coming in drunk? And so we need to make sure that the public knows that we have rules in place, not running it like a prison, but running it very strict, to make sure that, as steward of the public money, that we take care of both issues, the homeless and how we spend our money, so.
And the goal in each one of those cases, as they come through the door and are gone through the intake process, is to get them lined up into a housing program. And that's step one, when we get willingness to participate in the housing program, and we go about figuring out what those housing needs are and what the housing availability is to get them on board with, with that housing concept.
And just two more concerns. So whatever neighborhood we decide to put this in, are we going to announce it to the neighborhood and the population? This is what we plan to do in this location?
The SPUD process would provide public notice.
All right. And last thing here, we talked about sex offenders. I know that sex offenders in every day of our lives here, but specifically in a concentrated area, if you're inviting children onto the premise here, are we going to use the Norman PD database to screen these individuals, just to scream them? So you can have an environment, I like the idea of having a shelter that shelters both and children, too, as well. But I think we also, we need an extra layer of protection for the children and at least look at the sex offender part of it. Just look at it and see how we can mitigate that.
You know, I think Councilmember Studley's recognition of a conversation with both the food and shelter program and the things that we know the Salvation Army currently does well on the family side, to provide some opportunity for separation between the families in that circumstance, and male and female individuals in that circumstance. So I think we can coordinate those efforts to prevent, you know, family or children exposure to, you know, any of the activities that could take place in the shelter.
So you're saying it's a segregated area, then?
Yeah.
One area for, for families and the other for, for single folks?
Yeah, potentially even off-site, remote location on the family side. So we'd love to pursue that as a, I think it'd be a viable solution, just to improve safety among people participating in shelter services.
Like I said, I'm on record, nonprofits should handle this. They do a better job than we do, and they're equipped for it. And I'd like to see where we can go with this. I like the food and shelter proposal. And like I said, to see what we can get, get as much bang for our dollars as we can.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
So I don't think food and shelter was going to buy the CVS location, right? So wherever they go, we would have to have Jane, the property owner, would it be the one to have to apply for the spud and do all that? Okay. And then do we know a timeline for a new building for food and shelter? Have they indicated, like, when they could give us, like, a more updated information or anything?
Like for the, the new properties they're scouting? I have no idea. I have not been in contact. I just now learned that they were.
I don't know what you guys are talking about, building a new building from scratch. Just the, the new location.
Just the, the new loc, the other locations they're looking at, not necessarily new buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can follow up on that. I haven't.
Okay, we don't know.
Yeah, obviously, any such agreement's definitely got to come back to the council.
My understanding, everything is just going to be rented. There's some property.
Right. But I didn't know they knew, like, they're ready to go and talk.
Yeah, we don't know those locations. We can follow up.
Councilmember Gray?
Um, just for clarification, the Food and Shelter proposal would not be taking children, right? It's just men or women, ma?
Uh, just men and women.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be the Salvation Army proposal that would actually handle this off-site for families that you're talking about?
Yeah, and they currently do provide that family.
Yes, okay.
Service that, that doesn't exist in, in, in the food and shelter environment currently. Um, I have a question for Mr. Francisco. In terms of the appropriation of the remaining CARES Act balance, is it currently appropriated or would council need to appropriate it?
No, it's already appropriated.
Okay, so, um, just at, at, at council's direction, uh, those CARES Act dollars can be made available to put towards the funding of the 2022-23 shelter program. And happy to make that, you know, dedication and Mr. Francisco will put a sticky on the, on those dollars, saying that's the first bucket of money we access, uh, when we execute the agreement with the service provider in the final form and format that meets your, um.
Yes, please.
Ideal. Did you have another question, Councilmember Studley?
No.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Hey, just to clarify, so we're going to do both with the, the, with the Salvation Army thing for the, for the families here? That raises our price to a million bucks?
Yeah, they're currently providing that service and I think we just might need to talk to them about enhanced communication and traffic direction, uh, because they did not indicate they were going to stop providing the current service unless they.
Stops.
Became this program and dropped it to a.
I just wanted to clarify on that because she brought up a good point about the families. Um, one last point, um, have we looked at other alternatives like hotels or anything along those lines?
Um, nonstop in terms of the pursuit of facility space available. We've been looking at industrial buildings. I mean, i- i- anything vacant. Um, Jane and, and her whole team, um, they usually have a pretty good indication of what's vacant out and around town and, and we make lots of phone calls kind of regularly in search of that opportunity. So, yeah, we, we look for all of the opportunities.
All right, just, just asking a question because like I said, the price tag is pretty high. It's looking at the price tag per person, you know, per night, per year. And, and it's pretty, it gets pretty expensive. Like I said, we need to make sure that we spend the money the best we can. That's, that's going to be the biggest issue with our, with the constituents who are on the tipping point, is how well this money is spent and do we have other alternatives other than a shelter location like a hotel? So I think we need to do a PR campaign, the city should, and explain the different options that were looked at and why we looked at it and how we're going with this, with this option here, just to answer those questions because they're going to ask those questions.
Happy, happy to develop that communication with Mrs. Verzka's office and in our recognition of the, the program of hotel vouchers, that happens pretty regularly throughout the year. Uh, hotel availability is definitely, um, volatile and what we don't get in the hotel voucher program is that whole intake process and the ability to make that contact with supportive services. So, uh, but there are a lot of hotel vouchers that, that are issued and handed out every single week. Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I was just going to mention a few things from the last report, uh, report that we had, um, on the emergency shelter before we closed it. And it was from May and it has 894 total stays, 104 unique visitors. And so 70, if I'm reading this right, 70 were male, 34 female, one other in May. And the nightly average was 29, the high was 36, the low was 20, and there were 16 veterans that stayed there in, in May. Uh, the age doesn't show anybody under 18, actually. So 18 to 24 was four, uh, people. 25 to 34 was 23, 35 to 44 was 22, 45 to 54 made up the largest at 27, 55 to 61 was 19, and 62 plus, uh, was 10. So, um, it also shows from December 2020 through April 2022 that we had a 729 unique visitors, uh, 487 male, 233 female and two other. And the nightly average during that entire period of time was 52, actually. And I think that counts the library, old library spots. So the high for that was 76 when it was at the library, uh, and included 84 veterans. And so the highest age group during that 2020 to 22 group was, uh, 35 to 44, actually. And so just kind of a spotlight or a snapshot of the, who is, who is using the overnight shelter when it was available? Um, what type of people, what age and that it does, you know, include a lot of veterans as well. So, um, I don't know if we just don't report that if there's someone under 18 or if we weren't allowing it or if there just weren't any.
We did not allow anybody under 18 to come in.
So if, if someone came in and they had a child with them, did we then say, well, we're going to send you over here?
Salvation Army.
Or a runaway.
Yeah, two runaways, yeah. Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to provide what we had on our last report, um, regarding some of the numbers and the different demographics of people using it. So it's, it helps tell the story a little bit.
Councilmember Studley?
You said where else? I'm sorry, whenever he said Salvation Army, you said or someplace.
Or somewhere. I, I don't know where it is.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's the only place I'm aware of is Salvation Army. That's like a shelter facility in Norman that accepts families. Um, but there are other options where if there is a family in need, um, where many of the CFC partners have hotel vouchers that they'll provide for that emergency situation.
And nation Norman.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I was curious though, how many operators actually applied for this RFP?
Uh, two.
Two, okay. So is it the operator that actually decides the size that they're able to operate?
Um.
Like we can't say, oh, Food and Shelter, we want you to operate 60 beds. We can't tell them that. They come to us and say, we are able to operate 50 beds and this is what we need to do that. Is that kind of?
Yeah, I mean, it's negotiable, but we can't say they have to meet a minimum. I mean, unless you want to make the money contingent on meeting a minimum, uh, we can't say they have a maximum, but that's fire code. So, so that's usually where we get in with, um, terms of availability.
But given the limited number of people actually willing to operate, I think it's pretty obvious that we need to be grateful for what we have, um, because these partners are stepping out of their shell, stepping out of their plans for their normal business of what they had planned to do in their business to operate this shelter for us because we need it. The city needs it. Um, and then with hotels, um, I don't see really that looking at hotels for a warming shelter would be great, but I think that for, um, looking at hotels for more affordable housing options, as we discussed last Tuesday, is awesome. So I do hope you are looking at that for affordable housing, but not for, um, homeless shelter piece necessarily, unless we have an abundance of abandoned hotels, then yes, please. But I think that given the fact that we need 9,000 affordable housing pieces, looking at hotels for that would be a much better bang for our buck, if you will. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Okay, so, and Matt, don't get mad when I say this, but we own a building just right over here that we were talking about, um, Factory Obscura coming in and stuff like that. Let's say worst-case scenario, we can't get this going, we can't do something in time. Could we, as like a temporary emergency, open the, I think Jason had stuff, Parks and Recs maybe had stuff in there. Is that still in there? Has they cleared it out? Could we use that facility for an interim?
Almost, we're almost out with everything. Uh, we've got some rental space up the street. Um, we have downsized dramatically. We've, uh, disposed of a lot of things that, you know, old broken chairs that, why would we hold on to the old broken chair? We need to get rid of that stuff. So we have been, uh, thinning out that inventory of surplus merchandise.
Might need hearts for it someday.
The, the space is almost completely vacant. Um, I don't think staff has gone down that road in terms of evaluating, um, restroom space. It's got climate control, um, right now it's fairly warmable and fairly coolable, not, not like air conditioning standards, but, um, I think probably equal to the shelter space, um, we had up through May. I would say similar ability to keep it that warm. Um, staff would be happy to start that inspection and concept, uh, as early as tomorrow.
So I mean, worst, worst-case scenario, and I know Councilmember Peacock, I know what we want to do with it, but in the meantime, if we, we need to do something, winter is coming, not to get all Game of Thrones, but winter is coming and so, thank you for laughing. And we, we need to do something. We can't, we can't go back to what we were doing. That's just not working. Our winters are getting colder, the summers are getting hotter, et cetera. So if it takes 90 to, I liked it so much better, Jane, when it was nine days, but it's, if it's, if it's gonna be 90 days and we have to sign a lease and get all these things and appropriate the funding and do all this, like, maybe in the interim, because I don't have faith it's going to be 90 days from tomorrow, we're opening the doors. So I would like to maybe consider doing something like that, too.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, with council consensus, staff would begin that evaluation of the vacant old couch property tomorrow?
On the, on the couch side or on the east side?
Well, I think probably the biggest open space, just so it's most easy to manage. But we'd have to look at, how, how do we get to restroom?
There's two restrooms in that east side that I recall. I don't recall any down at the couch side. There must be.
Yeah, it, it's probably the east side would be the, the most logical.
3,000 feet?
Yeah. In, intake opportunity, restroom space, and most importantly, uh, observable by security personnel. That, that would be mission critical. But with council consensus, we'll start that evaluation tomorrow and report back to council its capabilities. We can get square footage capacity from the fire marshal to say, this is how many people could occupy the space and we'll bring you what that playlist looks like.
Okay.
Councilmember Peacock?
Um, I just want to say, I do think you have a good idea. I think using a city-owned building makes a lot of sense because it does cut down the timeline, remove some of the red tape around it. I just have some heartburn on that particular location, not because of what we're, not because of what we talked about necessarily, I just remember all the complaints and all the heartburn we got from downtown property owners on the last warming shelter on Webster. Uh, and I think you're going to have a similar fight with this one. So personally, I would prefer to see it at a different location, not downtown, but I, I mean, I do think what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
Oh, yeah, not as like a long-term solution. Just an interim until we figure something out.
Follow that, yeah. Councilmember?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think, uh, as a last resort, if we have a building right here and nobody lives right next to it, so, uh, right here around City Hall, post office, police department, all around. Uh, and it may be our only option, given the short amount of time that we have to work here. And I think the, we do, definitely do have some lofty plans for that area and I don't think they'll be coming in this, it's the winter, I guess. So we've got an ability, I think, if we can't figure something else out or if we can't get the RFP worked out and we get down to it, that might be the last resort we have to use. And if it's just mostly storage space, you know, it makes sense to make some better use out of it this winter. And, uh, so I think that's a pretty good idea to pursue as a, as a last resort, if you want to call it that.
Me too.
We'll bring council back a plan. Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Any further comments on, on agenda item one?
So we will begin negotiation with Food and Shelter and begin facilities evaluation. Keep you posted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number two, discussion regarding the city attorney hiring process.
So, council, this, although, although, um.
We have to.
The, the voters, um, kind of changed the world for, for you and for, and for some staff members. Uh, they have now, um, indicated that they, they prefer we amend the charter to give you a total of three employees.
Didn't get a raise, but we got put in charge of three more employees. We got triple the employees now.
Labor law.
I, I don't know, we really didn't have a long conversation leading up to that, like, what if? Uh, but tonight gets to be our what if, because now it's for real. Um, I, I need to prepare some action items for you and I want to prepare action items that meet your desires. Um, if it is council's intent to hire Mrs. Catherine Walker in that capacity, that gives me path A and I will bring you action items to plug Mrs. Walker in as your city attorney. If council were to say, um, well, I mean, she's nice and all, but she's not our cup of tea. We want to do a recruitment, that puts me on path B and we will go about that activity. So I just need a little direction to kind of get the party started. We have found some job descriptions.
We'll take her.
So job description would be modified to reflect the boss being the city council. Um, and Catherine did some homework and actually, just to show you why Oklahoma is a wonderful place to live, city attorneys who work in that capacity reached out to Catherine and said, here's how it would work. And it's going to be, it's going to be a good thing. Um, she was actually, Catherine, I'll let you describe where you found employment agreement, uh, kind of boilerplate.
So we're a member of the International Municipal Lawyers Association, which does conferences every year and provides a ton of excellent work, worked on nationally, uh, for model contracts, model ordinances. They have a model city attorney in-house contract. And so I was looking at that yesterday and, and that seems to be a good starting place. It'll all be negotiated. You guys don't want me to advise you on how to negotiate with me, so you probably want to think about getting someone, uh, that, that you can ask questions to. I would, I have not talked to Margaret Love and I will not talk to her about this, but she is already working for the city in union negotiations, so that might be an option. And I can pass the mayor her number. Uh, and I, I will, myself, myself and my staff will stay completely out of that, of course, but, uh, we can go through that process. I sent you all an email last week that, that the charter changes aren't effective until the governor's office signs off on them. So one of the phone calls from one of my city attorney friends was, uh, you know, I asked him how long did it take on his recent charter amendment? And it varies from administration to administration, how long that takes. Um, he said, I think his last one was Governor Fallon and he found a legislative liaison and kind of directed it through that person and that helped him expedite it, he felt like. So he's, it took them 60 days, I think he said. So we've got some time.
Yeah, a little time. Um, and what we would do is we'll develop job description for city auditor, job description for city attorney. Uh, we will bring to you through, um, Mrs. Margaret Love, if that is the council's desire, uh, kind of that boilerplate employment agreement language. And what I would recommend is you have three employees, the boilerplate language be similar in all three of those employment agreements. Um, and just so council can say, what was the provision? That'll be the same provisions pretty much for all three of your employees. And then what we would do is once you've approved the job description on municipal auditor, we'll start that recruitment process and set up interviews with council and that type of thing, uh, with Mrs. Walker. When the employment agreement reaches your level of satisfaction, we will agendize that for your formal action and, uh, we'll be off to the races. Councilmember Lynn?
Uh, quick question, um, does she have any prior experience?
I think she sold used cars in a previous.
For real though, uh, just a quick question, being a municipality, I don't know the laws around this, do we not have to advertise it? And is it, is there not a requirement somewhere that has?
There is absolutely no requirement. Uh, council has a whole bunch of latitude when it comes to hiring your professional staff.
Okay, because I mean, you know, like in different government jobs, they have to advertise.
Absolutely.
So I didn't know about that. That was, I just wanted.
Yep. Councilmember Tortorello, do you still have a question?
No, he had my, he answered it.
Uh, Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I, uh, do support keeping Catherine. Um, and.
Part one.
Partly, yeah, because, uh, you know, I had the opportunity to be involved in your hiring and you had the opportunity when we hired you to come in and hire a police chief, city attorney, planning director, and then shortly after, public, or not public works, utilities director, parks director. So, uh, Daryl has had to hire several, uh, directors of departments in these last three years. And, uh, I think you interviewed several candidates for city attorney, uh, back then and chose to promote Catherine, so I, uh, continue to support that decision.
And actually in a conversation, and of course, Councilman Brolman was the only[1751.58] one here from three years ago, one of those conversations we had was, we have a really good city attorney, we really like her. Should we hire or do we want to wait for you? And I said, if, if you like her, I'll take her, because I can, I'll work with anybody, that's not a problem. And I'm assuming they were referring to Catherine. So we wound up in a really, really good spot.
Yes, and Margaret Love helped us with your transition and with the former city attorney's transition as well. So definitely someone I would be confident helping us out with that. Is the point where I would ask, how, how does the city attorney's office work if the head of the department is now not a city, so is Rick, and do they still answer Catherine?
That was my question. I didn't think it was going to pass, so I didn't know.
So we just had that conversation, actually. And it's one of those things where until you really need to talk through it, how will it work? And the good news is, all of the city attorney staff are considered unrepresented. They are not members of AFSMI or any other bargaining unit, which means we, we have the luxury of kind of moving them where we need them. I think it makes 100% sense that that staff operate under Catherine in the same capacity other staff operate under me. So if there is an employment issue, grievances would go through Catherine and then, you know, ultimately whatever action is taken would, would follow the same course as if they worked for me. I think had they been represented by a bargaining unit, Catherine would direct workflow, but if they had an employment problem, I would be the, the avenue for any grievances or, you know, any, any problems to be resolved. Since they're unrepresented, I think it works beautifully, Catherine, if you agree that the, the team would just be Catherine's team and she would handle everything from soup to nuts related to all of their employment activities.
We have ethical rules we have to follow as lawyers and there's one rule in particular that deals with representing an organization and that rule doesn't change regardless of who does the hiring and who does the firing and all of that at will for cause. It doesn't change the rule. So we all have to continue to represent the city through its duly authorized constituents and so, so I don't anticipate a lot of changes from that standpoint.
Councilmember Forman?
So you are the employee, not anybody else, so we only do your evaluation, not anyone else's. I'm going to need to see a job description. I just, I, I can't wrap it around my mind.
Catherine can now hire or fire legal staff?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, okay.
And she has definitely the expertise, so.
Okay, yeah, I need to see a description. I can't.
Happy to.
You sit together.
Councilmember Peacock?
Will we be evaluating salaries or terms of the contract in this, or is this just an up or down vote whether or not we want to retain Miss Walker?
Well, tonight, the direction is if there is consensus.
I was going to open the door for you to race or raise.
What, what we would love to do with, with consensus, we'll move forward with the assumption that Mrs. Walker is your, your choice. We will actually have that question asked and answered through Mrs. Love. And it makes sure everybody's happy at the end of the day.
And we'll, we'll be able to have executive sessions to discuss contract terms and stuff with her.
Oh, man.
Well, I fully understand.
What other things can we throw at her?
Councilmember Shuler?
Along, a similar line of questioning, but I'm sure that now, you know, we'll get more of this kind of hammered out as the process goes on, but my brain was like, is she going to have more work to do now?
That's why I was kind of asking.
Because now she has.
She's free.
To hire and fire and grievances process will go through her and all of that, like there's more function of.
You know, we are fortunate, there are a whole lot of turnover. She keeps hiring young ones like Anthony, they'll probably outlast all of us. So I would say that level of administrative overhead, she already does their evaluations. So I think very little added workload and of course, the rest of it's just the volume at which government comes at us to process for you.
Yeah, okay. Well, in full support of Catherine.
You guys made life so much easier, I got to tell you.
No song and dance or anything.
I think she's earned it.
We're heading into item three. I'd like to take a break before item three, take five minutes and then we'll come back and do item three in executive session.
Come on, y'all are making it too easy. Don't y'all want some entertainment somehow?
I did, I did make her sweat when we went through the hiring process originally, because we did a full-blown recruitment and she had to compete just like everybody else and she competed.
Hey, I know she can do it, so I really do want a little song and dance.
I can sing, yes, she can.
I have seen her sing. There's video evidence.
I just guess if you're musicals, I assume you can dance.